Receiving benefits and the people paying the benefits, or whatever the situation might be. So I intend to support the not to pass motion. We do have many improvements to make on this program. Any additional discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, then we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion not to pass, please raise your hand. Opposed? Right. Stanis. We'll come to LV 722. This is an act to strengthen penalties for abuse of general assistance.
Okay. This bill provides that a person who makes a false representation of a material fact to obtain municipal general assistance is ineligible to receive further assistance for a period of the longer of 120 days or until that reimbursement is made. Existing law you can reapply in, at least over 121 days, but you are never required to repay it. The department, other public health programs have payback and penalty provisions when a client is overpaid or receives benefits through misrepresentation. And you would need to include a requirement that states payback in connection with reimbursement to the municipality for the overpaid. Opponents, people frequently make mistakes not trying to commit fraud, and it would make more sense to clarify the requirements. Now, this is drafted in a way that kind of blew my head up a little bit. So even though you have the entire general assistance law, I have put part of this, reprinted it again for you. So, current law requires a person who knowingly or willfully makes a false representation of a material fact to the overseer, so that is to the GA person, or the department that causes assistance to be granted, is ineligible for 120 days. Under Sections 4321 and 4322, the person is entitled to a notice in writing with an opportunity for an appeal. If in that appeal, the fair hearings officer finds that a false representation was made, the recipient is required to reimburse for the amount paid. A fair hearing can be conducted by municipal officers, a board of appeals that's specially set up, or one or more persons appointed by the municipal officer to act as a fair hearing authority. So that's the current law. Section two of the bill extends that ineligibility so that the person is not eligible until the reimbursement is made. But section one of the bill indicates that the GA overseer is determining that the person is not eligible until the reimbursement is made without an appeals process first. If the intention is that the person is entitled to an appeal, then you don't need section one. If you intend for the GA overseer to be the one that's determining that 120 days, have to pay the money back, and it's also a costly crime, but obviously the GA overseer is not doing that, then you need section one. But that's very confusing to me, the way that that's written, because of the sort of reference, and it's because it's old language, it's not the bill so much as the current law is very confusing. So, just to reiterate, if the intention is for the appeal to be where you determine that you have to pay the money back and you aren't eligible, then you need to, you don't need section one. But if you do need section one, then you need to ensure that that written notice of denial and opportunity for appeal is being followed, if that makes any sense. And the preliminary fiscal impact statement, it may generate new revenue to the department. The department may also include new expenditures related to additional work and administrative functions. And so I believe that this one, we just need to get that. I hope that's not too confusing.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so I'm trying to understand, so currently, currently, someone has, if the overseer of the program finds that the person made a false representation, they'd be ineligible for 120 days?
Right. And it could be a costly crime, but that would be referring it.
Only if that person chooses to appeal it.
Right.
If the appeal is found against them.
Then they have to repay it.
Then they could be required to reimburse that.
That's right.
Does that, does it anywhere in there say that in order to, they're required to, in order to requalify after that 120 days is over, that they have to reimburse that?
No. What I'm saying is that section two of the bill does that.
Right.
It's section one of the bill that's confusing. So if you look at the bill, don't look at the blue sheet, it's the actual bill. Section one is adding, that first paragraph is related to the GA overseer, whereas the third paragraph is related to the fair hearing process. So, you need the, you need the third paragraph, which is section two, regardless. I mean, if you want to do this, you need that in order to say you're not eligible until you pay it back. The question is, who determines that? Is the GA overseer determining that, or is that being determined in the appeal?
Okay. What I'd like to see, and maybe we can call some folks up from some of the public, the public service directors to, I don't like having a soundtrack, the folks, some, from public service directors who deal with this, maybe to make sure we're on the right track on this. Personally, I think having appeals process is important. I think people should have a right to do process there. It shouldn't just be one person's determination. If they really feel like this is a not appropriate determination, there should be an opportunity. So I wonder if, my thinking is, I'd like to have it read that the first person, the overseer, can both say.
You're ineligible for reimbursement.
You're ineligible, and you have to repay this before you're eligible again, but that person.
No. It's the 120 days. The GA overseer can say, you're ineligible for 120 days. That's the complaint, is that they pay back on day 121.
Right.
But it's a fair hearing officer, or whatever that means.
Right. I'm saying I would like the bill, I'm saying.
Right. No, I'm saying currently, the paying it back is in the fair hearings process, not by the GA, in current law.
Right. I'm saying.
I thought you said the opposite.
I'm saying I'd like the overseer to be able to require that, and the person, if they feel like that is an improper decision, has the opportunity to appeal that, but the 120 days, I'm sorry, the requirement to repay is, is already there, but they can appeal it. And if the person who they appeal it to has the opportunity to overturn that, if they find that it's been improper, the decision.
Then you want the bill is drafted.
Is the, that's the way the bill is?
The bill is drafted so that the overseer can say, you have to repay it.
Yes.
And you don't get, you're not eligible until it's repaid.
Right.
So that's the way it's drafted.
Right. But the person has the right and opportunity to appeal that decision.
Right.
So that's currently how it's drafted?
No, that's how it's currently drafted.
Okay. Great. Could we, could we hear from someone from the public assistance directors?
Thank you. I'm Randy White, I'm the General Assistance Director for the city of Sanford, and I'm kind of uniquely qualified in this area because prior to becoming the General Assistance Director, I was a police officer for nearly 24 years, so I dealt with the criminal side of the fraud cases. So I look at it from a very different perspective as a result, and hopefully can shed a little bit of light on that. And as you heard, the 120-day disqualification period is currently what would happen in the case of somebody, whether it was because of fraud or for some other reason, but particularly that's the case that we'd be talking about now. One of the concerns that I have personally is that when we're talking about a criminal issue, we do have a constitutional piece that we all live by where there is innocence until proven guilty. So when we get to that point, what is that direction going to be? Is this legislation going to be based on a conviction or only upon my decision as an administrator, which is, which is there to be done? It is the client's responsibility to do that. The only thing I look at is what happens down the road if that is thrown out in a criminal case. And we may want to take a step back and make sure those two things work together. So that would be one thing I would be concerned about.
Let me ask you, who currently, so when an individual makes an appeal, who hears that appeal currently?
It would depend on each individual municipality. The municipality is responsible for having somebody that is qualified to do that. Oftentimes, it will be an administrator, a general assistance administrator from a neighboring community, or somebody that has knowledge of how the general assistance process works. And then, if a person disagrees with a fair hearing, they do have an opportunity to take it to the court level. So there is the opportunity for that secondary level to be heard as well if the person was not satisfied with the fair hearing.
Representative Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the administrators are making the determination of whether false representation or material has been presented to them in order to gain?
That would be correct. At the time that the person is doing the interview, doing the application, et cetera, that would be initially where that determination would be made, based on the information that we would gather.
And what do, what would you, as a GA administrator, do to verify that these documents are either factual or not factual? What steps do you take?
As many as possible. The reality is, is that what you're going, for example, one of the issues that would come into play would be a person that has come in and not reported being employed but being paid under the table. And obviously, that's not going to show up in any traditional check that you're going to do, but thanks to this day and age of social media and so on, oftentimes, those things will come about. And if that turned out to be the case, that a person was taking home $400 a week but being paid under the table and had never reported that, but came in and did a general assistance application, and the application was based on finances that did not include that employment, then that would be an example of one of those things. What we would do to verify that would be to track down the source of the employment, relying on the statements made by the applicant themselves. Those are some of the things that would go into place at that time. It could be any other number of steps that a person would do, but it's a matter of tracking it back to the source of that information. If you don't have that, then you, then you're not in a position to be saying that the person is lying to you in the first place. So it really, it really is a matter of doing investigative work.
Representative Fittain, if you have a question, I'll put you down if you could have your hand up.
Thank you very much. So what it sounds to me is that, like a lot of other things, we've discussed a couple of them today, you know, the way that this is administered, the way that these fair hearing processes are administered and investigations are conducted, there could be a lot of privacy in that, municipality to municipality.
And it would depend on the skills of the person doing the fair hearing, et cetera. I was fortunate that the person who does ours takes time, he goes to the courthouse, researches, like, you know, the statutes on every issue, and so he's very, very thorough. But it really depends on what you have available to your community.
And again, in a very small town, it could be, one of the selectmen or, you know, doing it who might not have the benefit of someone who's actually not a law enforcement background, and probably knows how to do a, conduct an investigation, you know, better. And obviously, the quality of the investigation is going to impact the ultimate decision and the outcome, right? It's the person who's doing the investigation who's also making, who's making the decision.
And more importantly, that there's uniformity to how that is done.
Right. And then if a person is dissatisfied, I think if we're talking about people who are screaming out loud, like, who needs their recourse is to, is to take it up to some kind of an appeal up to Superior Court?
Correct.
Correct. And obviously, there would be, you know, a resource issue there, perhaps.
And it is, and one of the other resources that would come into play is that there is no, unlike with a criminal defense, you do not have the right to attorney representation in that process with a fair hearing or that next level. So that is something, too, that would have to be taken into account, as opposed to the criminal charge itself.
Right. So again, you're on the civil side, though, I mean, you know, there's a different set of rights.
Correct.
And then procedures available, and then resources available to be, again, there could be a lot of variety from municipality to municipality in terms of how this, this area of justice will, well, that's probably the word, is, impacts people who are very needy.
And that is very true, and if I could just add one other piece, having dealt with court case after court case, from the point of a person being charged, you're looking at month after month after month going by before adjudication is even reached. And then at that point, the norm in this situation would be that restitution would be required by the courts. Now, the person has a lot more hanging over their head in that case because that involves a warrant for failing to pay fines, for, you know, for, because of the restitution, et cetera. So there are some very, some very strong pieces that are going to be put into place on that. That was why, if you back up a little bit, when I was talking about making sure that the criminal piece and what's going on at the other end are somewhat in line with each other, there's a very different timeframe.
Right.
And that's going to create some confusion in the process as well.
And if a person has a local municipal hearing process regarding, you know, some GA that they've received, and they've got a criminal investigation handled, how they conduct themselves in the, in the one area where they don't have as much hanging over their head or as much a risk, like, and they might just abandon or not even contest the GA process because they might be worried about things they might say and do from an evidence perspective might impact them in the criminal pursuit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And they might just, I might intend to bother to feel this, you know, this small GA problem because I really don't want to say anything here that might impact this criminal process.
And that would be very true.
Thank you.
Representative Heinison?
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Certainly.
A couple of questions. Do you feel that people are, know the requirements well enough when they're applying so that they don't make mistakes? Are some of these mistakes, that's one thing that we heard?
The thing that I would say, from the administrators that I work with, and I am in contact with many administrators from many different sized communities, and the way the application is structured, it is made very clear to an applicant how that works. There is, most do multiple levels of explaining what is expected on the application, in that it is read aloud to the person, and is also given in writing. I do both because I do have people who apply that are, that are illiterate, or who struggle with, with reading, or some that can't afford to buy a simple pair of reading glasses so they can't read this. I read it to everybody so I don't put somebody on the spot, so they hear both. And I also take the time to break it down into simple layman's terms as to what the requirements are as well. And from who, you know, people that I talk to that do this job, that seems to be an across-the-board process. So I don't think there's a lot of problem there. I think there are already some oversight pieces in place for how we administer a general assistance program, and those things would be addressed if that was becoming a problem with a particular administration office. So those, those problems I don't see as being a big one. The mistakes made, there's a big difference between, between somebody making a mistake on the application and the person purposely, and that's what the language states, the person have to intentionally make that known to the administrator, or, or hold something from the administrator. So a mistake on what went on, if you give a quick example, I had a client once that didn't report a source of income. He was told by his caseworker that he didn't have to because the caseworker honestly thought there are some forms and a method of income that we cannot include in an application. This caseworker truly thought it was something that wasn't under it because of the program that the income came from. Obviously, we're not going to go after that person, it was more of an educational opportunity so that in the future, it wasn't a problem. So there is judgment used, and again, we were talking about that, that ability to be able to sit down with that person and do that, be able to garner that. And it was even the applicant that disclosed it because he still thought it wasn't included, but he just happened to talk about it in one of those things. So that's the difference when we talk about a mistake versus somebody who's intentionally attempting to defraud the system.
One more question.
Yes, please.
How many actually go to court per year? How many cases go all the way to court?
I have not had one, but I've been doing this only three years, so I can't, I can only speak for my own program. As far as across the state, obviously, there would be variation, and there are perhaps other administrators that can give a rough number. A lot of times, we're able to sort out potential fraud before it ever even becomes an application, and that saves my community a lot of money. Prosecutions are very expensive, so if we can sort that out before the person has ever even received any assistance, that's invaluable.
And that's a, you know, it's a town of 22,000 people, where in three years, you haven't had a court case, I think that's.
Although I have one that's coming up, so. The person hasn't been charged yet, but it is coming up. And that, that's actually a multi-program fraud case. So I was actually notified by another program that's taking action. So that's, that's how that all came to be.
Thank you.
Representative Burstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. White, can you just base on this for us, like, give me an example of what happens? I just want to, I guess my concern is, that single mom with a couple of kids at home, she's losing her mind because she's got her kids, and she does make a mistake, and then she has to pay something back, and she, how is she supposed to work and even figure out to do that? So can you fill in the gaps in my little scenario I have in my head here?
Well, there's a couple of things that would come into play there. When an adult on an application, if they're disqualified for any reason, it could be for this reason, but it could also be because the person quit a job or was fired for misconduct. There are other reasons a person could be disqualified. And, you know, I don't have the language in front of me, but my understanding would be this would still fall under the same way it's done now. There's a pro-rata assistance program that's done. So in the case of somebody that's been disqualified, but it's a mother with three children, that family could still be eligible for 75% of that eligibility. So it's not like it would be a complete cut of that assistance, it's only the person who committed the act that would be cut from it. It could be another adult that had nothing to do with that decision made, who could still be eligible as well. So it would not, and my understanding that this legislation would still fall under that same idea with the 120-day disqualification, so it would not be a complete removal of those services completely.
Representative Sanderson? Senator Haskell's on that.
Thank you for being here, Mr. White, I really appreciate it. If you, you said that you usually try to cut off the attempted misrepresentation at the past. I'm sure the vast majority of the applicants you have come into your offices looking for, seeking help, probably are there not for nefarious purposes, they're there out of a very specific need. But, kind of an idea, I mean, how often do you see this? Maybe four times a year?
As far as somebody who is providing it?
It's trying to, yeah, what about, somebody who may be trying to, to, for lack of a better way to put it, gain the system?
As far as finding situations, like I said, the ones that I've dealt with, others, this other one came to me that I have pending, that that's come through a different program. As far as ones where I find something that we're able to nip before it ever gets to the point of assistance being granted, even that has to be few within 10 times in a year. I don't have an exact number.
Oh, so it's more than, okay, all right.
It's very small. But keeping in mind that we do, my agency last year did 226 cases, I believe that was the number. So it's a very small number, where you find something that was either left out, or wasn't presented clearly, or what have you. And oftentimes, it has to do with under-the-table employment, and that's a, that's a common one, because the person is more concerned about the employer firing them or getting upset with them because this came to light than the other way around. And that's often the case. So, but what we've usually been able to do by doing, and again, thanks to other means that are out there and the technology, it's a lot of times when the person calls to make an appointment, I ask for them to bring the pay stubs in, and when that person is a little puzzled, it usually, it results in the person not applying at all, which is, which means that there's no money that it changes hands at all, and that helps to prevent the problem in the first place. I would rather go that route than have a whole host of problems that are now opened up, which leads to more expense and a lot more hardship for, usually for children in the home.
And now, one of the pieces of testimony that we have indicates, there would need to include a requirement that the state is paying back to any portion that was reimbursed to the municipality for any overpayment amount. I mean, is there a standard that requires that when you have somebody who has actually defrauded the system intentionally, and you're taking, moving this along, is there a trigger, are you required to contact the state on that regard so they can recoup their portions of the payments to this individual?
We're required to report any acts of fraud. If somebody commits that act of fraud to the fraud hotline that is connected through the municipality, so that would be the normal process. So in the event that I discovered that I had a client that did that, that would be the step I would take. As a matter of fact, when, when I was contacted by another program, that had already happened, so that case was already going through that. And then another piece, as far as the restitution, for whenever something is paid to my office as a payback, I have clients that come back in and pay for assistance that they received in the past. And when that hap, believe it or not, but when that happens, we, we're required to report that back to DHHS anyway. So what happens is, is that is, that is removed from the reimbursement from that month, so that it makes it an even wash.
So it's like a cost settlement, then you're washing it.
Exactly. So it's already going to happen when that repayment is made to the municipality.
Okay. Thank you.
Senator Haskell?
What's my head is about the authority, the fair hearing authority. Do they have the capacity, and do they require repayment from these individuals? Is that what they define?
They're actually in a position to either show that the administrator made the proper decision, or that the administrator did not, and then they would make the recommendation as to what the administrator needs to do to correct it. So the way I understand it, I would not look at it being an issue that the fair hearings examiner is going to order that the restitution would be. If I, as the administrator, already required it, the fair hearings examiner is simply stating, there's no problem with this decision, it was done properly, and it would go back to the administrator's decision.
And so you have the, you have the authority then, once the hearing authority, once the fair hearing is gone on?
That would be.
To require that restitution?
It would just, right, it would go to the decision made by the administrator in the first place.
And so the problem that we're trying to solve here is that you have required that repayment. It's not occurred, if you get to day 121, and they're reapplying, and they haven't paid what they might have owed, is that something that you see often? Is that always the case?
Well, again, I can't speak personally because I haven't been in that situation yet. It just hasn't, I'm sure I will, it just hasn't been a long enough period of time at this point.
So in three years, you've never had somebody who was required to pay back their money not do it?
I'm curious, are there any, I'm curious if, from any of the other folks here, from some of the other towns, if there are any examples that might be able to be shared, of course, the names and identities in the protect the innocent, what happened? Sure, please. Thank, by the way, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your amazing. Hello. You can introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Vicki Edgely, I'm the Director of Health and Welfare for the city of Ditterford, and I've been administering general assistance for 30 years. Having people come in and make false representation is not at all uncommon. And I would suggest that one out of five people come in and tell us something that isn't factual. Now, whether, once that is explored, what they're telling us doesn't always have a bearing on the eligibility. So that's really important. The misinformation they provide has to have a bearing on the eligibility in order for us, for them to be disqualified. So if Mary comes in and applies, and her boyfriend's living with her, and he doesn't have any income, and she hasn't reported that he's living with her, that didn't have a financial bearing, so there may not be an issue there. If Mary comes in, and more often than not, the way I find out is when I'm checking with landlords, or we do an inspection, we're trying to inspect as many units as possible because of the fires that we've had and a couple of deaths. So the code enforcement officer may go in looking for something, goes back and says, geez, you know, it looks like, you know, I went in, there's a man who just stepped out of the shower. So a person that comes back in, and no question, well, yes, he does live here, and he has been living here, and the landlord tells me he's on the lease, and in that case... he's on the lease, and in that case, then we would deny for false representation. Now, oftentimes, we find out that they have provided false information within a very short period of time. So it may be a month or two, they may have, usually less than $1,000 has been granted. Historically, our DA doesn't want to deal with small amounts of money. So we have prosecuted a number of cases over the years, but for, compared to the number of people that we've seen and those who have committed fraud, it's been miniscule because the courts don't have the time to deal with that. Our police departments are overwhelmed, everybody's busy. It takes a lot of time and some time to pull this case together and do it properly. So what we would do is disqualify someone for 120 days. So recently, actually, a code person went to a house, we learned that the woman was working full-time. When he went to do the inspection, the child said, oh, mom's at work. And it turned out she was working and she hadn't reported it. It's not, I know the courts don't want to get tied up with this, so what I did with the, we had a detective involved, we called the police, got the police involved, and what we did was sat with this woman, and she agreed to reimburse the municipality in lieu of charges being filed. We think that the city is better off being made whole than to put out, to expend more funds to try to get back small money. And that's why I like this bill. So if somebody comes in and they commit fraud, they're determined and eligible, they always have five days to appeal. Everybody, there's an appeal process, everybody has the right to appeal. And I'm not trying to argue with my friend Randy, but he is still fairly new to this end of it. And I'm going to tell you that when somebody is denied general assistance, they think we're doing something wrong, high tree legal answers the phone. They may not the rest of the time, but they do if they're going after the city. And I've never had a client complain that they couldn't get legal representation when the city's got no. The next step is to go to a fair hearing. I will tell you, in over 30 years of administering general assistance, I have never once had somebody who admitted to committing fraud ever asked for, or ever asked for fair hearing because of fraud. We've had fair hearings for numerous other issues, but not because of fraud. But we never get paid back, or really. It's only a lot of cases that get into the court system and the city's made whole. And we do unfortunately have people who think it's a joke, who do come back on the 121st day. And I will tell you, that's very insulting, that they're guilty.
Representative Penn?
I just had a quick question for you. If a woman comes to you and fills out an application, and she gets her qualification, then about maybe six weeks later, she has a boyfriend, then what happens? You come over and you see the boyfriend there, and she didn't tell you? I've looked at, I've been looking at this application, in no way does it say, if this changes, please notify us.
Well, general assistance is administered for no longer than a 30-day period. So if, after the time that she applies, somebody moves, changes? That's a different story. Now, we're looking, then the next month when she comes in to apply again, hopefully she would tell us.
She refills out the application every time?
Yes.
You don't just go over it and say, has anything changed?
First time, once every six months, we have a four-page application. Then every month, we have a two-page application. And it always asks if there have been any changes, has any change in household members, any changes in income. So it's a good case.
Thank you.
Representative Sanderson?
So at this time, after the 120 days is up, or regardless of the 120 days, at this time, according to statute, which is what this bill is trying to get to, unless you actually take action, legal action, you cannot get any kind of restitution.
Restitution.
Restitution debt.
That's correct.
You have to elevate it to taking a legal action, aren't you, that you worked through the process like you did with that?
Yeah, I mean, we were fortunate in this case, the person, you know, she canted out, she was dishonest, and she agreed to make payment arrangement, and we made a reasonable payment arrangement, and she pays something every month. Our goal isn't to make people destitute, but it's also very important for us to make sure that other people in the community know that we take this seriously. When somebody gets away with it, you'd be surprised. When somebody gets caught, someone else doesn't come in. Somebody gets away with it, then two or three others show. It's a small world and people talk.
So, and to be, to be clear, so currently, if someone is required to, you know, restitution, unless you take legal action, there's not, there's no real, it's kind of on the honor system a little bit, isn't it? Or am I understanding that?
Oh, really, really. Like, this one case, and this is unusual, because what we said is, we don't want to press charges. We don't, our goal isn't really to get you into the court system. All we want is to be made whole.
Right.